Roll call of attendance.
Don.
Madam Chair, excuse me for interrupting, but Emma, our student representative, will be here a little bit later on. She's at an Alpine or a Nordic skiing event, and we'll have her report when she comes here.
Wonderful, thank you. Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Second. Any comments? All those in favor of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. We do have three donations listed, one from an honest donor for the high school girls' softball scoreboard, a very generous donation there, and additional donations from the Montomeda Parent Teacher Organization. They are usually on our list. They donate throughout the year to our elementary schools, which we greatly appreciate as well. Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Organization matters, election of a chairperson. Dr. Larson?
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, our past practice has been that our board chair is usually a two-year term. That can be changed, though, and currently, Dr. Lucy Payne is the chair, and she's called the meeting to order. And then we now have elections of the officers. And so, at this point, I'd like to open it up for nominations.
Any nominations for chair?
I'd like to nominate Judy Schwartz.
I second that nomination. Any other nominations? All right. Nomination's closed. All those in favor of Judy Schwartz as chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And as the motion carries, this carries down the table, too.
The two of you.
You touched it.
You have jury votes.
I might not use the gavel tonight.
Okay. Completely understand. Congratulations, Judy, on being chair.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. We need to elect the clerk and the vice chair. Are there nominations for the clerk or the vice chair?
I nominate Julie McGraw.
I second. Are there any other nominations for the clerk vice chair position? There are none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We need to elect the treasurer. Are there nominations for the treasurer?
I nominate Stacy Stout as treasurer.
My second.
Are there any other nominations for treasurer? All those in favor of Stacy Stout, please say aye.
Aye.
The salaries?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. By policy, our school board compensation is in Policy 202.1, and we take the average of the Northeast Metro 916 member district school board. And that is in your packet on page eight. Recommendation is to approve the salaries based on the average.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And board appointments.
Madam Chair, members of the board, at our December meeting, we talk about these things to try to make sure that the assignments are evenly distributed and that people's area of expertise or passion can also be fulfilled. We have different committees. The first one is the Facilities Committee. The current 2017 school year members are Mike Chevalier, Kevin Donovan, and Julie McGraw. For 2018, how are we proceeding?
Decided all that at the December meeting.
I move the Facilities Committee comprised of myself, Kevin Donovan, and Julie McGraw.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Finance Committee is the next one. The purpose of the Finance Committee is to assist the school board and the administration with long-range planning related to district finance. The committee is co-chaired by the Treasurer and the Director of Business Services, Mr. Bill Menosian and Ms. Stacy Stout, the board members. The 2016-17 school year, excuse me, 2017 school year was Kevin Donovan, Julie McGraw, and Judy Schwartz.
I nominate Stacy Stout, Kevin Donovan, and Julie McGraw to be the Finance Committee.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 The Enrollment Committee, that was a new committee that we formed this year. The purpose is to assist the school board and administration in examining enrollment trends, attend the resident housing market, and make recommendations to the full school board about open enrollment.
I nominate Stacy Stout, Judy Schwartz, and Mike Chevalier.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And the Policy Committee. The purpose of the Policy Committee is to assist the school board administration in updating the district's policy manual. This past year, it was Mike Chevalier, Lucy Payne, and Stacy Stout.
I nominate myself, Judy Schwartz, and Mike Chevalier.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We also have advisory boards. The first one is Association Metropolitan School Districts, also called AMSD.
I nominate Mike Chevalier.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The next advisory board appointment, Minnesota School Boards Association, MSBA, and this is the Legislative Committee Liaison. During the legislative session, the School Boards Association will serve as the contact person for the legislative efforts and the lobbying that's happened. Kevin Donovan has been it in the past.
I nominate Kevin Donovan.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The Minnesota State High School League, MSHSL, the individual serves as the district representative for the Minnesota State High School League. It was Mike, but this year?
I nominate myself.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Other governing board appointments. The first one is the Integration District Education Equity Alliance. This is the Integration District Partnership with North St. Paul Maplewood Oakdale School District.
That one, I'm sorry. Oh, goodness. I nominate Kevin Donovan.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The next one is the Montomeda Area Educational Foundation, MAEF. The mission of the Montomeda Educational Foundation is to recognize and develop the full potential of all people living and working within District 8323, teaching and learning.
I nominate Julie McGraw.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The Metropolitan Educational Cooperative Service Unit, EXU, provides cost-effective, high-quality education-based services and programs to school districts. The thing that they do the best for us is the class-size study.
Nominate myself.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The Northeast Metro 916 Governing Board. This is the intermediate school district 916, in cooperation with other member school districts, provides programs and services to students, including secondary, vocational, special education, telecommunication, and other low-incidence specialties.
Nominate Judy Schwartz.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The TIES Joint Board Representative. TIES is an educational technology collaborative that offers cutting-edge school administration software, hardware, internet services, and professional development designed by educators for education.
Nominate Stacy Stout.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And then finally, we have other committees. The Elementary PTO, Mike Chevalier has been that in the past.
Nominate Mike Chevalier.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The Calendar Committee, that's a committee that meets as needed. Kevin Donovan has been the representative.
Nominate Kevin Donovan.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The Community Education Advisory Committee, this meets quarterly. Stacy Stout has been the representative.
Nominate Stacy Stout.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The District Curriculum Advisory Committee, three times a year, and it's been Lucy Payne.
Nominate myself.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
The Special Education Parent Advisory Committee.
Nominate Julie McGraw.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 The Gifted and Talented Advisory Board.
Nominate Julie McGraw.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have an instructional leadership team, data assessment team. They meet varying by building. In the summer, they usually meet in August, the 20th and 21st. It's been Kevin and Julie.
I think that one, do we wait until that rolls around and who's in town and able to make it? I don't really nominate someone for that one. Is that one we can wait on?
We can wait on that one.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay. QComp, there'll be a QComp meeting this spring still, and we need a board representative to be on that.
I nominate Mike Chevalier.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And then we'll be looking to have a levy liaison this year, and we'll have two people for that.
I'd like to nominate three people, Mike Chevalier, Judy Schwartz, and Kevin Donovan.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then the commencement speaker.
I'd like to nominate Kevin Donovan.
Second.
Thanks, everyone.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Thank you. We have our committee assignments and our governing board assignments and all those things taken care of. So thank you, school board members, for that.
All right. We do have some presentations and recognition tonight.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is a highlight of the evening. Unfortunately, Eden could not be here tonight, but we'll work on that for a different time with O.H. Anderson. But we do have our recycling, organic supporters, and Julie Osterbauer is here to present on that. So board members, if you come out front, please, and Julie to the podium.
You know, could I make a comment about that? We've had a number of board members who have been ill lately, and we also have a real wellness initiative in our district. We want to keep everyone well. So we would like to honor our recipients and our contributors by standing as you come up, but we're not going to come to the front and shake your hands tonight. You don't want us to.
No, you really don't.
Kathleen?
Okay. Hi, my name is Julie Osterbauer, Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, and tonight, I would like to present certificates of recognition to the head custodians and the Passages students in appreciation of their contribution and volunteer efforts related to our recycling and organics program. The custodians handle the waste disposal according to specifications, while Passages students, along with the help of Lori Moga, their job coach, are teaching all the students at each school how to use the new lunchroom sorting tables purchased with the help of a $15,000 grant from Washington County. Thanks to these efforts, our recycling has increased from 40% to 61.6%. And Mitch Stockman is representing the group. And Mitch, could you come up and get your certificate? And I will give you the rest for your group. Thank you.
You guys want to move in? Not too close to me, though. Don't touch anybody. Here we go. Okay. And?
Oh.
Do you want?
I'll get him.
Thank you, Mitch.
Oh, I. She got hurt. Yeah, yeah. She got hurt.
Oh, gosh. We're both trying to scoot away from them.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I do want to make one more announcement about that. This last year, during the summer, we ended up doing some piping reexamination, and we found one of the pipes in the parking lot was actually a little bit higher than it should have been. And so it was an added cost to get it to the right length, right depth, to prevent freezing. Julie Osterbauer was responsible for finding that and then also insisting that we get the pipe at the right depth so that it would not freeze. And then Julie was also in this weekend checking on all the pipes and everything. And so, because of her far-sightedness and willingness to come on in, we did not have any problems with the horrendous cold. So thank you for all your work on that, Julie.
Kudos to you.
O.H. Anderson update?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kirsten Ballens, Principal at O.H. Anderson, is here to share some information about equity and innovation. So Kirsten.
Madam Chair, respected school board members, Lieutenant Larson, thank you for the opportunity to share just a few highlights around the work that we've been doing at O.H. Anderson this year with equity and innovation. So as we look at our learning targets for this brief time together, just so that we have a shared understanding of some of the strategies and resources that we have been using to work towards the equitable instructional practices in creating an inclusive school community, and also that we have a shared understanding of how we're fostering that sense of innovation and creativity through one of our maker spaces in our media center. At O.H. Anderson this year, we are continuing to develop and enhance various instructional strategies and practices that support an equitable and inclusive learning environment. One of the ways that we've been using this is actually starting with our group work as adults. So in our various staff meetings and the work that we've been doing with Sarah Dusick, we've had a focus around how are we incorporating a sense of all voices being heard when we are in our staff meetings, when we're working in small groups, meaning that the way that we internalize and make it a part of our work as adult leaders, the way that we can bring that forward with our students in the classrooms. So some of the ways that we have been doing this, and I think you'll find different people would say they have different comfort levels with that, might be something as simple as what we call a talking stick. Could be a pencil, could be a fancy stick, but it's a way that promotes listening as people are visiting or talking. So a person who has the talking stick is the only person talking, and the other person is sitting quietly and listening, not responding yet, but having a chance to listen. We also have used things called talking tokens. And again, this is a way to help all voices being heard, because as adults and as students, we've been in those situations where someone may tend to monopolize a conversation or group discussion, and we want all of our students to feel that their voices are heard and what they have to say is valuable. So this is a simple, visible tool for our students and our staff as we're talking to say, here's what I have to say, I'm putting that on the table, and everyone has a chance to share. And then the other piece are what we call task cards. And that's just a simple strategy in terms of group work where the information is laid out for each of the students or the staff, and everyone has the same knowledge, the same information, as they're working on the task for a group. Another component of our work around equity is the research-based curriculum Second Step, which we are using in all of our classrooms, grades three through five. And that is a curriculum that explicitly teaches and practices different social-emotional competencies. When our third year of using Second Step, we've been rolling it up each year, so our fifth graders this year have had it since they were in third grade. There are about 15 to 20 lessons per grade level throughout the year, and those are delivered at maybe during their morning time, it might be during their room, when I need time in their homerooms. And I think what is powerful about one of these as well is that as we're looking as a state and as a district around possible social-emotional standards, because that's a piece that will be coming into place for this, Second Step really supports any of those standards that would be coming from our state around social-emotional learning. So some of the concepts within that are built upon with each grade level. And in terms of supporting work around equity and having an inclusive community, something like accepting differences, where students are talking about what it means to have empathy, and how do we accept differences in people? How can we predict how others might feel when they're being teased? And these lessons are delivered through videos, classroom discussions, seminars, where we're playing. And another piece that is seen throughout all of the lessons is also around showing compassion, how are we using kind words and actions even when someone may be different than we are? How are we showing that to all of our classmates? And then finally, another piece to highlight around equity is a new piece that we have this year with some diversity lessons that our school counselor Pam McCabe has developed for each of the grade levels. And so throughout the year, she is going to classrooms using selected read-alouds that really highlight different components of equity and diversity and having class discussions. We know that stories are very powerful, and using these stories with our students to generate thinking, reflecting around equity issues has been an important piece for us this year. As I said, these are just a few of the ones that we are using. Separate is Never Equal is the true story of how a family helped end segregation of schools in California in the 1940s, and really going through even though someone was born in the United States based on skin color and last name, was told they could not attend a certain school and needed to attend a different one, and how her family fought for that. Each Kindness is a story that, in terms of talking about equity or diversity, tells the story of a young girl coming to a new school who is poor. She doesn't have the nice new clothes, she has old toys, and is not accepted by some of the other students. And through lessons with the teacher, talking about how little acts of kindness can make a difference for students. And then another one that I highlighted here is Let's Talk About Race. And the author there really tells the story how each of us have a story, and that's made up of our name, our family, what we like, what we dislike. And that race is sometimes part of that story as well, and how people can make assumptions about different people based on their race, and that really, he talks about when we all remove our skin, we all have the same bones underneath. And really, again, highlights some of the discussions and thoughts for students as we talk about some of the diversity issues. So those are just a few of the pieces that we have been putting in place around equity and inclusion, and that we want to continue to develop more and enhance those as well. And at this time, I'm going to ask Beth Earnborough, our media specialist, to come up here and just share briefly with you some things around innovation.
So we're building sets of Makerspace items at O.H. Anderson, and Codybots are little robots that can be controlled with iPads. And I think what I'm going to do is play the first video so you kind of get a sense of what's going on, and then I'll talk about all three other videos. But the first video shows you a group of kids who, this is the first time they've seen their robots, and they're playing with them, and I'm hoping we can hear them try to get the speech recognition working.
Turn around. How do you see that face?
This.
Oh, it's fine. Look at him. Angry. Look at him, angry. Oh, God.
So these are just little, super-short clips, but the idea being that the kids, when they're using these tools, they don't know all the answers. And so a skill that's really hard to teach is inference. I have to infer what I need to do. And so they're watching each other, they see what's happening, and you'll kind of see them cluster around and work through something. And in choosing to purchase these little robots, there are a lot of, you know, fancy toys out there, but sometimes the threshold for learning is pretty low. And one of the reasons we got these Codybots is there are a couple different apps you can use with them, and one of them allows the kids to actually do block programming. So today, in my Scratch class, I was teaching kids how to do Scratch, and a student came over to me and asked, can you show me how to use this one little feature in here, which is allowing variables to come in? And so I showed them how to snap those together, and I was realizing, as I was preparing to come tonight, once you know how to do that in Scratch, you'll be able to do that with these robots as well. And so in the middle clip, you can see a kind of a spontaneous group competition happening.
I don't know. Oh, look at him. I am racing.
So they're just learning how to drive them, and you can kind of see how they just kind of cluster. They made an area where they could do the racing. And the cool thing about that is I was watching another group, and I didn't have a camera ready, so I didn't get it captured, but we have another Makerspace where they can build with these blocks, and you can race those things. And they were actually having a competition between the two different sets, and so thinking beyond what can this one thing do, but watching them discover has just been really a highlight. This last one is just kind of fun. It has to do with music, the musical interpretation. You'll see this kiddo over here really getting to it. So it's just the whole excitement and the joy of how he's dancing, you know, through it. He's discovering it, and so that's a little bit of what we're doing with the Makerspaces with the Codybots.
All right, I did have one more slide here. I wonder if Patrick can, there we go, just in closing. So I always feel like it's important to keep our mission statement in the forefront, and the decisions that we make and what we're choosing to work on and focus, how does that align with our mission statement? And so as we think about creating that learning environment where we know that academic and social growth is important, I think our pieces that we're using and working on with equity and innovation support that and support the continued growth for each of our students at O.H. Anderson. Thank you. Any questions? Yes, Kevin?
Not so much a question, but a comment. I had occasion to be over at the Media Center a couple weeks ago, I think it was, and it was really impressive. I would really encourage, if board members, if you haven't been over, to see what's going on. It's pretty neat, and what struck me was there was kind of three environments that were working at the time, the Cublets, the, what's the other?
Codybots.
Codybots, and then just some traditional PC work. And it struck me much that it was like a Montessori classroom. Each of the groups of students were kind of self-directed and doing their own thing, and the level of noise was just really subdued. I mean, they were just engaged in learning, and it was really very impressive. So I do encourage visits if you haven't been over. So I was kind of hoping those guys, they look like little vacuum cleaners, and I was kind of hoping maybe they.
Did you say a word, too, about Makerspace?
Makerspace, and Beth, if you want to, yeah, do you want to jump in on that?
Yes. So Makerspace is, is it really a concept?
Need to come to the, yeah.
I think of it as kind of, you know, years ago, when I was growing up, you had your Tinker Toys and your Lincoln blocks where you're building things. And so the movement now is to find ways to get kids to explore things by building and doing. So some traditional Makerspaces can be real paper-oriented and, you know, glue and scissors, very artsy, but it's also electronics, circuitry, robotics. It's really anything that kids can make and do. And the idea is creativity and innovation in these self-directed learning spaces. I know it's broad and vague, but that's really what we think about.
So how does Makerspace compare to the FabLab spaces we have? Don't you have many FabLab in the Flex Lab space there?
Yeah, I feel like they're connected in the whole scope and sequence of, you know, the FabLab is like on steroids, you know? It's like you have all this stuff that kids are able to use. I've visited there, I don't know much about it, but you have different components where you can go in and make things. And so what we're doing on our end is preparing kids to get there. What they were doing on the computer in their choice time was they have a list of choices where they can do certain learning activities, but they know kind of what those choices are, and they can explore the things that they're interested in. So each lesson that I do throughout the year, those components become a part of that play space for exploring. So everything that we're doing in my learning area is equipping them to get to middle school so they know how to sign into things and be safe online and the digital citizenship. It's just, it's an electronic play space. I don't know how else to describe it.
Any other questions or comments? I have one more question.
Mrs. Ballens, for the equity curriculum Second Step, have you seen any impact in terms of student behavior, referrals for bullying or discipline? I mean, after three years of implementation, are we seeing a change?
I think that we are, you know, it's always a process in terms of working with students on that, but I think as we are having conversations with students, their understanding of what this looks like and so forth is increasing. Sometimes we say, you know, we also need to put it into practice. It's one thing to talk about it in class and role-play and so forth. How is it looking when, you know, we're in other locations as well? So, yep.
Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We should go and look at that. We need to approve minutes for December 7th and December 14th. Any motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, I was here. We skipped Emma.
Hi, everyone, sorry.
We have a motion on the floor.
Oh, on the floor. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Hi, okay, so at the high school, obviously, we just got back from winter break, and hopefully people had time to catch up on homework and sleep. I know there was still a lot of activities going on personally. I went and saw the girls' varsity hockey team. They got second at their tournament they had, they played at the U of M, and that was really cool that they got to play, like, at a college stadium, and they got second to the second team in the state, so that's really exciting. Finals are coming up, so there's a lot of high stress.
Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We should go and look at that. We need to approve minutes for December 7th and December 14th. Need a motion to approve? Second?
Oh. I was here.
We skipped Emma.
Hi, everyone, sorry.
Oh, on the floor. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Hi, okay, so at the high school, obviously, we just got back from winter break. And hopefully, people had time to catch up on homework and sleep. I know there was still a lot of activities going on personally. I went and saw the girls' varsity hockey team. They got second at their tournament they had, they played at the U of M. And that was really cool that they got to play like at a college stadium. And they got second to the second team in the state. So that's really exciting. Finals are coming up, so there's a lot of high stress. And since we have such a short week this week, there's a lot of tests and stuff to prepare for. And then we have next week, which is going to be like studying. And then we don't have school on Martin Luther King Day, obviously. But then that week is three days of finals. So that'll be fun. I know there's a lot of winter sports are kicking into high gear personally. We have our first Alpine race next Monday, so I was late. But, and I know basketball, there's a hockey, boys' hockey game tonight. And other than that, next week on Tuesday, there's a boys' basketball game at home. And the organization Bonafide U. I'm one of the ambassadors and we're working with Mr. Schweitz. And it's going to be one of the pillars of the Super Bowl, promoting the concept of Minnesota Nice. And it's starting at Monamida. And so we're having our like Bonafide U kickoff game. And so it'll be at home at the high school. They're playing St. Thomas. And we encourage people to come out. And they'll be announcing they're starting a kindness scholarship campaign. So it's $5,000 and it's split between two people. So you can nominate a story of someone that has impacted you through their kindness. And they'll choose like one story that was being told. And they split the $5,000 between the person who submitted it and the person who was doing the kind act. So they're kicking that off in Monamida. And it's really fortunate that their generosity and all their hard work is starting in Monamida as Mr. Schweitz is a Monamida dad. So that's really cool. I know we're expecting to have a big turnout for the game. And there'll be apparel for sale and just more promoting the cause. So if anyone wants to come, it'll be at the high school. Other than that, I think there's a lot of stuff going on. But yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Emma. Discussion items, Kalen and we dance.
Madam Chair, I'd like to draw your attention to two things in January. The first of which is the MSBA Leadership Conference. That's on Thursday, January 11th and Friday, January 12th. Monamida is going to be extremely well represented there. On the 11th, we'll have O-H Anderson present about the Mathematical Mindset. We'll also, on that Thursday, have the high school present about using process-oriented guided inquiry learning for students and instructors. That's POGO. I should have mentioned that it'd be Kirsten Ballens and Donna Forbes will be doing the presenting. And the school board sponsor is Stacy Stout. For the Monamida High School, it's going to be Kathy Nickelby and Jim Lane. And the school board sponsor is Kevin Donovan. The middle school is also presenting on Thursday, the 11th. The middle school is going to be talking about the many uses of technology at Monamida Middle School. Mike Newbeck and Jim Anderson will be presenting. And the school board sponsor is Lucy Payne. On Friday, January 12th, the Wildwood Elementary Toolbox Project Social Emotional Skills, Mark Hammer and Joe Pendleton will be presenting. The school board sponsor is Judy Schwartz. At O-H Anderson, we'll also be presenting again on Friday, the 12th. Technology in the Elementary Specialist Classroom, Kirsten Ballens, excuse me, and Beth Erland-Born. And the school board sponsor will be Mike Chevalier. So that's things that are happening with our staff. But our school board members are also being involved. Kevin Donovan is going to be talking about a roundtable about Foundations of an Education Foundation. And on the 12th, Lucy Payne will be part of a roundtable workshop, excuse me, on Every Student Succeeds Act, Future Design Work Group Recommendations. So we're going to be very well represented at the MSBA conference.
In addition, Judy Schwartz will be receiving an award for 30 years of service on our school board.
And one additional item is Lucy Payne has thrown her hat in the ring for District 6 MSBA. So hopefully, she can prevail. There is a challenger from Stillwater. But I know, that's why it's important that we all come and cast a ballot at the event. So if you're coming, cast a ballot.
One other event is the, on Tuesday, January 30th, we're having the Community Book Read, A Good Time for the Truth: Race in Minnesota. We're expecting a really pretty good turnout. We've had inquiries from North St. Paul Maple Oakdale. And Kathy Wieland, our community ed director, has gotten that in the community ed brochure. And Kevin Donovan will be...
All right. Anybody else want to call in? That brochure is beautifully done, by the way.
It's all Kathy.
It's beautifully done. All right.
I believe next, is it next Thursday is also the, did you mention the O-H Anderson Winter Program? I think that's the 11th, the one that J.D. Steele sponsored. So, I mean, we all talked about that. I think it's seven o'clock. Is it seven o'clock next Thursday?
Evan has to take pictures.
Budget forecast.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'd like to ask Bill Menazi, our Director of Business Services, to come forward and present some preliminary information about the budget. It's important to understand that this is for the 2018-19 school year.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present the budget. It's in your board packet tonight. As Dr. Larson mentioned, in your board packet is just the first look at the 18-19 General Fund Budget Forecast. The information looks very similar to the 2017-18 Revised Budget that the school board approved at the last meeting on December 14th. And we're doing that just for ease of viewing and reporting. And I should mention, this is the first of two discussion items that I have tonight that will be just kicking off the concept. And certainly, these will be ongoing discussion items throughout the winter and into the spring. So just introducing the concept tonight on both of these items. But starting with the budget, this is the first look. We will seek formal approval on the 18-19 Preliminary Budget at the board meeting on June 7th, which seems like a long time away. And we will present the concept in total tonight and then dig into the details on the options and scenarios to address what is a significant budget deficit in the coming months here. So, and starting with your spreadsheet, I'd like to start with the notes, oddly enough, at the bottom. So three or four notes here that are overview, but significant to the budget details. So first of all, this is the 2018-19 Preliminary Budget. As the school board knows, we are currently in contract negotiations with the teachers' union. That contract will be for 2017-18 and 2018-19. So we're actually talking about what would be the second year of that contract. So certainly, we have put an amount in there for an estimated contract settlement. And that amount is subject to change and most certainly will change depending on the settlement. It does include other assumptions and estimates that are subject to change before the approval in June, many of which we know, we know that we are getting, we are scheduled to receive 2% new money from the state for 2018-19. It is not a funding year at the legislature. And that's what the settlement was during the last funding year in 2017. This deficit that we're introducing tonight assumes zero budget adjustments for 2018-19. So certainly, we will be going through the winter and spring here and talking about ways to to address the 1.6 million that we need to address in budget adjustments. And then finally, it assumes the same enrollment or very similar enrollment for next year at 3,240. And the main reason why that's important is as we know, the revenue budget is largely student-driven. So if your enrollment increases, your revenue, especially state aid revenue, will follow along with that. So I wanted to start with the notes section because that really does drive the information that you see here. So looking at the estimated...
Can I ask a question about the assumptions? We have a second contract that we have to negotiate this year, is that correct? The parent contract?
Yes.
Yes.
And I have included estimates.
For that as well.
There as well.
That's also included.
It is. It is, yes. Good question. So looking at the fund balance. So the June 30, 2018 column, where you see the unassigned fund balance is estimated at 2.298 million, that will tie to the end of the 17-18 Revised Budget Year. So it would make sense that the June 2018 ending balance for 17-18 would be your beginning balance for the next year. And that's where we get that 5.8% beginning fund balance. So that comes right from the budget that was approved on December 14th. Looking at the 18-19 Preliminary Budget Revenue, we're forecasting revenues of 36.12 million. Again, I mentioned the 2% new money that we are scheduled to receive from the state legislature in 2018-19. For us, at our current student count, that's just over $400,000 in new money. So certainly, that structural imbalance that we've talked about at length between the increases in our revenue and our historical increases in expenditures will continue for 18-19. Looking at our preliminary budget for expenditures, we're forecasting a preliminary budget for expenses of 37.75 million. Estimate on contracts, as I mentioned, for next year. And then other known and estimated costs, things like insurance, property, workers' compensation insurance, other fixed and non-fixed costs that we are estimating for next year. And it should be noted that, because we do have Fund Balance Policy 714 in place that says the school board will strive to maintain a minimum unassigned fund balance of 8%, we are below that. And so things like supplies and equipment expenditures are the same as this year. There was not an increase in this budget for things like supplies and equipment for next year. So you can see that the, it should be noted that if I skip down to the assigned for subsequent year budget, you'll see that that dollar amount is 47,000 to start the year. So as the school board will recall, we are using 500,000 of the assigned for a subsequent year budget in this current year. That's reflected in this budget. I took the 500,000 out. And so you can see there's not a transfer from the assigned balance up to the unassigned balance, which really does impact that deficit for next year. So we are forecasting an estimated deficit of 1.63 million for next year, which would bring our estimated unassigned fund balance percentage down to 1.6%. Now, again, I want to say that assumes zero budget adjustments, excuse me. So certainly, we will spend the next meeting, starting on January 25th, looking at options and scenarios to really tackle that deficit, including looking at enrollment, looking at budget reductions, looking at other methods where we can look at that deficit. So the goal here, as I see it, is to really take all of these moving parts, the budget projection, the enrollment analysis, contract settlements, other details, and funnel those down through into a report and a budget that we'll ask the school board to approve in June. So certainly, we are early looking at this. But I think it's important that we do that because it is a significant deficit. And we'll need to go through many options throughout the winter time here. So just wanted to introduce the concept. And next meeting on the 25th, we'll look at some more detail.
Questions or comments? We've seen this information before. We're aware of this deficit that we have to do something with. So this is not new information. Questions or comments?
It doesn't look any better, though. Every time we see it. It just looks the same. Agreed. Anybody? It's going to be hard here.
Together, we're going to fix it, all of us. All right.
This is all of our problem.
Then you want to talk about enrollment projections? Kevin, you have a question?
Well, I mean, it just, this is a problem that we all need to work on together to figure out. And we need to leave no stones unturned, sacred cows, all those sayings. But we really do need to work all together collaboratively to try to get this under control. And I'm glad that we're doing it early rather than later so that we really can look at options. Thank you for that, Bill.
So looking at the second discussion item tonight, the enrollment forecast for next year. And this really does tie into budget. They are really one and the same. So again, just a brief update on our enrollment forecast for 18-19. The Enrollment Committee had a chance to meet earlier tonight, as Dr. Larson mentioned. The Enrollment Committee is really a new committee transformed from the Personnel Committee with the purpose of helping direct the enrollment philosophy and sort of the long-term enrollment goals of the district, analyze data, including housing market information. So I think it's a good committee and look forward to working that committee going forward. Just a summary of basically the committee meeting here in the enrollment forecast. Given our budget constraints for next year that we just talked about, the committee as a whole, and again, certainly not a decision-making body, but important to get the feel of that committee and report it back to the school board, felt that it would be important for our, given our deficit budget, that our enrollment be at or slightly above our current year enrollment. Meaning that if our enrollment projection of 3,240 is similar to what we have this year, and you just saw the deficit, that going back from that figure, at least in the short term for next year, would make that budget reduction that much more difficult. And so the committee felt like it would be important to be at or above our current figure for next year. We looked at things like retention rates and the probability that students accept and attend, given the open enrollment timeline and the importance of having the information in front of us so we can make decisions early on open enrollment. The probability that those students accept and attend would go up. Important to note that the open enrollment deadline, we're sitting here on January 4th, the open enrollment deadline for next year, as it sits right now, is on January 15th. So it's coming up fast. And that we will really, in conjunction with the budget forecast, talk about recommendations or make, have the school board make recommendations on approved, denied, or waitlist open enrollment students starting at the end of this month into early next month. So that really folds into the budget, the budget conversations that we have. But just wanted to give a brief enrollment forecast. The Enrollment Committee did meet. We're scheduled to meet again. And that'll be an important part of the budget forecast for next year.
Any questions or comments? A number of us were at that presentation.
Okay, thank you.
We have a few action items here.
The first one is the operating practices. Annually, we review the operating practices. We do that at the retreat. And also, again, in December, we adopt them at our organizational meeting in January. And they are in these four areas, how we relate to each other, communication, governance, and how we conduct our meetings. Recommendation is to approve as presented.
Need a motion? Don't move. May I throw the discussion about that? We have discussed these on many occasions to get them through. Hearing none, all those are favorites.
Aye.
All right. Policies.
Madam Chair, members of the board, there are six policies before you here. They have been recommended by changes either by state statute or by Minnesota School Boards Association. These are coming now for a third reading. They've been through a policy committee. And then an additional first reading. And then some work has been done on that, a second reading. They are unchanged. But I do want to draw your attention to Policy 620. That's the credit for learning. There'd been a question about the conversion of credits that get awarded for students who are taking post-secondary enrollment classes. The guidance department has in their protocols to meet with each of the students to make sure that they are in line with the state requirements and that the students will not end up being short. Century College, University of Minnesota, and University of Northwestern University all have classes that are based on individual credits. Language arts, for example, freshman language arts or freshman English, excuse me, is all four credits at all of those schools. But a lot of the other classes are two, three, or four classes. There isn't always an exact four-class translation. That's why the high school credits, that's why the high school counselors make sure that all the students have and they... that all the students have, and they've created protocols and practices so that students do not get caught short and are able to graduate with their post-secondary enrollment credits. So the recommendation is to approve these as presented.
A motion?
No move.
Second. May I have further discussion?
Mark, I can't remember which policy it was that was looking at weighted grades. Is that in the credit for learning policy as well?
Yes.
So there was discussion about that, and I was wondering where the board was standing on the PSCO grades, because right now, isn't it that AP and CIS are weighted, but PSCO is not?
That is correct.
And to me, that seems to be a little bit in conflict because the CIS and the PSCO can be the exact same course, one offered on our campus, one offered on a different campus, and one is weighted and one is not. And so I'm a little concerned about the equity there for our students in those grades. And I know we had the discussion, and board members have brought up a concern about that, so I wasn't sure if someone was going to amend that or if we were comfortable with that. I just posed as a question on that policy.
Madam Chair, the recommendation from the secondary administration and in comparison with other school districts was that you only weight the classes that you have full control of in terms of able-to-teaching on your classes on your site. Although there is an advanced placement curriculum, and the college and school class does have a set curriculum, the recommendation is that it stays within-house to give advanced, excuse me, to give weighted credit.
That seems to be in conflict, because they don't have control over the curriculum, but they want courses that we do have. Can you repeat what you said? I don't understand, because we don't have control over AP or CIS.
Correct. There is a set, but we do have control over who teaches it, and it's our teachers, and it's our students in our classes, and it's not a, the idea is that the control is more with us than it is with the college.
Okay.
Did we do a comparison?
The information I got back from the high school guidance counselors was shared at the last meeting. It was only like five or so school districts, they all did the same thing. None of them, the one that struck me was Mankato, which does not give credit for PSCO classes, even if it's a college right there.
Do you have any credit or no weighted credit?
No weighted, excuse me, no weighted credit, excuse me.
Any final comments?
So I, well, I do have concern with it. I don't know, I guess, what our options are, if we would, if we did weight the grades that are of the classes taken off-campus. What would that, do we, is there some, a way we, a pattern we would follow? Do you know what I mean? Like, is it just as simple to do that as it is to weight the grades that are taken on-campus?
I believe so. There might be some difficulty with the conversion, but other than that, it would just be, the multiplication factor is 1.1.
Okay. I guess the point is, it's a matter of what's best for the student, and it might be best for a student to take a class off-campus. And while I recognize we love having them on-campus and there are reasons for that, when you look at the individual, are we negatively impacting them for a choice that they made that was in their best interest?
Any other comments about that? So unless someone makes a motion to amend this policy, it'll pass as it is? Correct. This is the third reading. There's been a trial of these things.
Right, but we've been asking questions about this from the beginning, and no questions have been made.
So I'm just clarifying that no one wanted to make that motion.
Correct.
Right, and we didn't have the information back until today about, or until just now, about what other schools did. And until you mentioned it, I had fallen, oh, I wasn't at, sorry.
And this is our policy?
It is at any time we choose, but we have to go through multiple readings again and things like that, so.
We could do that in the future.
Right.
So we have a motion on the floor, and a second. Any further discussion? All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that will approve these policies, 509, 614, 620, 721, 805, and 903. School calendar for 1920.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the Board, this is the approval of the calendar for 1920. This committee includes teachers, administration, school board, and a parent meeting to discuss the formation of the calendar. The recommendation is to approve it as presented here, with one caveat, there is some issue about recognizing other holidays and so forth. Sarah Dusick, who's our Equity Coordinator, will be sending out a monthly email to all staff indicating certain things about it that will provide an equity viewpoint. So for example, in this last month for January here, she wanted to make sure that everyone is mindful of students who may not have had as plentiful or enjoyable a break for whatever reason, poverty, loss, want, et cetera, and she was providing questions to help teachers talk with students about this. There will also be times when we get other calendars out there about other holidays and how other people celebrate, and so we're trying to cover the equity through that way as opposed to having a whole additional calendar.
Any more stuff on the calendar? Do we need a motion to approve the calendar?
No.
Second. Any further discussion?
I have a question. Last spring, Dr. Larson, you presented a proposal to add some PSC half-days and things like that, and we are supposed to come back to us this fall, and as we look at this calendar, I don't see those added. Is that proposal still being worked on? Is that going to come back to us at some point? Where are we with those PSC days?
We are very, very, we're very, very tight on the hours and minutes that we have for schools. We are 12 hours over, and so if we were to have late starts, early dismissals, or half-days as we talked about last year, we would have to either add days or pull people in off staff development in the event of school closures. So it's not, has not proceeded.
But it was fully ready to proceed last year, I thought, and we just asked for more information on implementation, so I'm lost of how it fell off.
Well, two of the things, two of the pieces on there were, one was about assessment days, which we neglected because we didn't have daycare arrangements made, and then the other part, if I'm recalling correctly, there's a lot of concern about childcare if we had late starts, early dismissals.
Right. So the board is just interested in the implementation plan and supported the concept, but now the concept has been taken off the table?
Right, because of our tightness in schedule.
Just to follow up on that, I thought that we were going to look at other alternatives for the assessment days. I know that other districts do things before school starts, or before school starts, and instead of maybe having the back-to-school night, they do a one-on-one meeting that night. So were we ever going to hear about what we've seen in other districts or comparisons?
Other school districts have done two different things. One is that they've had people come on in and paid them to monitor or proctor tests before school, like the NWA MAPS-type tests and so forth, but we're not adding any costs or any expenses to that. Other school districts have, like, have done what we've done with kindergarten, is that we can still count that as a day, plus there's plenty of room there to do the kindergarten assessments on those first two days, right after Labor Day.
But I thought that the request was that there was a need for additional assessment days, for the reading. So how are we meeting that need?
At this time, we are having the assessment or literacy teachers get subs for the day so that we would have a sub for that day to cover at least two days this school year. So that's how we kind of built it into, since we couldn't change it.
But that's an added cost. Dr. Larson just said we weren't adding costs.
It's not an added cost. It's shifting from what maybe they would have gotten a sub for out-of-district training, or, you know, so that's where it would be shifting it, so it wouldn't be added cost. We just have to take away from one area in order to.
So we've lost staff development to implement the assessment days.
Some of the opportunities for, you know, critical writing or something like that, you know, because there's a little bit of fun, so you have to look at what the priorities are.
Right. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Lynn. Anything else? Have a motion and a second. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any reports, MSB?
Meeting tomorrow, so no report right now.
May I? There was no meeting yet. These are going to be short reports. MSBA.
MSBA, we've kind of talked about it already with the calendar events, but the letter conference is, we're the only state in the Union that actually offers this conference free of charge. The other four states charge.
Now, you might say, well, one doesn't work. Hawaii is, does not, is not a member, so they don't, they don't have a program that way. But again, let's make sure we turn out for Lucy and show her support, and before you know it, Lucy will be MSBA president.
Not one of my goals.
Always be.
That's not one of them. Thank you for your support, though.
Thank you. Metro 916 has not met. Our first meeting of the year will be next, next week as well. Any other reports anybody has to bring up? Probably not.
Well, I just, Madam Chair, the only, we've kind of talked about this event on January 30th, and EEA, the Equity Alliance, North St. Paul is bringing eighty faculty members, teachers, to come to this event.
Eighty?
Eighty. And I just think it's powerful that we're, we are working together, and this shows how powerful that is. I mean, not only are there teachers doing great work, collaborative work between the districts, but having a community of things such as this, this is wonderful. The test scores between schools in North St. Paul, Mapwood Oakdale, and Montomedi are breathtakingly broad. I mean, the difference between some of the schools and ours are, it's huge. And, you know, the distance, the geographic distance between buildings is only five or six miles, and yet, so different. So, and yet even a greater between St. Paul schools and the land Montomedi. But our partner, it's great to be working with them, and it's great that they're coming at us with such enthusiasm, so.
Anything else? Second.
After 35 years in education, and nine, these last nine are what I consider to be the best school district in the state, I'm announcing my retirement effective June 30th, 2018. During these last nine years, I've seen outstanding student success. I've witnessed dedicated and talented and compassionate colleagues, and have been thankful to work in a supportive community that really values education. Finally, I wish to thank the school board for affording me the privilege to serve in this remarkable district. We do have to speak about succession planning and also about our process for selecting the next superintendent. So at this time, I'd like to ask Nicole Flessner, Human Resources, and Lynn Veeker to pull up the table over here and join us here and walk through what we're planning on doing for the selection of a successor.
If you're not feeling good, you should feel free to go.
We'll have this discussion first, and then after that, we'll close the meeting to discuss the labor negotiations, but this is not part of the closed meeting.
So I will say too, I know I'm pretty good at agreeing, but this is pretty quick and fast, and I want to do, I guess, talk about it here, and then not so much a decision, but just some thoughts that we have in terms of, so due to some of the big decisions coming up, I know we've looked at search firms in the past, but that's a thought that we had that's even that we'd like to pursue, depending on the cost, that could be a factor as well in determining if we go ahead with that. I did talk to White Bear Lake, and I knew that they actually did an RFP, but they put what the district was willing to spend in terms of search firm, that'd be something that we could do if we went that route, seeing who would be available and what we've got. We were looking, doing some research just, you know, within the last couple of days here on what other districts have, what search firms they have used, and then we really have to investigate more, though, like Nicole was saying, what would the cost be? We also were gathering, how would we gather staff input and feedback about, you know, what would we be looking for regarding the superintendent characteristics, and what do they feel would be really important, and so how we'd want to go about doing that? Would it be a survey? Or if we went with a search firm, would they have recommendations? The other one was looking at, you know, what kind of school, community, you know, our families out there, what kind of feedback or input would they have, and how should we go about getting that? And, you know, with the search firm also, if we went with the search firm, maybe they have tools for that, too. Otherwise, we could look at different electronic surveys, too.
And also, and if we do go that route, how much input do we get? I think the tricky thing with the input is what do you do with it, and how do you use it? So I think before we decide on those things, it's important to know how we're going to get ones we try to obtain. As to the interviews, we talked about, one thing that I know we presented with the board in the past is our Ventures Center, which is our future selection, and they have a really good one-hour on-the-phone screener interview that they do for key leadership positions, and how they do that is they look at what are characteristics of successful people in that role, and then we interview that person on the phone, give them a thorough report about their prediction of success in that candidate. That would be one thing that we could do and add. And then if we did our interview committees, we have two different committees that can meet with some of our finalists, and then debrief together after they've met with that in order to recommend certain differences for the boards in the year. We also suggested the finalists could meet with members of the board and similar leadership team, for more of an in-depth conversation, get to know them, be more familiar with them, and how they can be best fit for the team. And then finally, we have a recommendation to the school board, from Mr. Gannon, to interview that best they can. So this is kind of our thoughts.
And looking at, you know, since it's recent information, looking at by the next session, really having it all mapped out, what, what it would look like, and if we, if we did select a search firm, who that would be, and what we could want, this is one of the, so that we wanted to be reassured that we have some ideas on these sort of things to think about. Talk about, you know, whether we're going to do any of them.
Yes.
You know, but it's a starting point. I would be really interested in the cost of a search firm.
Yeah, that's what we're just starting to kind of investigate, that, maybe, some of the factors. More evidence to the survey, some districts, Forest Lakes, and Forest Lakes contract with MSBA.
With MSBA.
Right.
And Springstead does it, too, right?
And Springstead has contacted us, I think, before they'd emailed to you, Julie?
Yes. What were you saying, Kevin?
Well, I just wanted to put some perspective on all of this, and, you know, Mark announced his retirement. We really didn't have a chance to say anything about Mark retiring, which I think is a wonderful thing, to have him be able at this point in his life to do that, it's great. But, I mean, we've already gone from, we really need to end that, so. So before we get too far down the road on that one, I would just like to commend Mark for being our leader for the last nine years. It's amazing, you know, just, it seems like it hasn't been that long, but Mark has been available and present to talk to. He's done some great work on lines of equity and diversity inclusion, and really started that conversation. I know the board's worked on that pretty, pretty well, but Mark has continued to do that through the Reimagine Minnesota process. So I just, for one, want to thank Mark for his nine years of service.
So you want to bell? I second that. Thank you very much for all the service. We were the up front in the building, kind of a leader that is.
Can't we, like, force him to stay, as a board, I mean?
I think the key thing is, is that we want to get a successor on board as quickly as possible. We're looking at some tough decisions as we go forward, and we're going to want to make sure that the person we have is ready to take on some of the challenges and keep this district as remarkable as it is. And so on the 25th, when our next school board meeting is, we'll flush these things out in more detail. I'm wondering if the board is interested in forming a subcommittee to try to speed the process along. We also have other administrative positions to fill. Mark Hamery is.
I think the key thing is, is that we want to get a successor on board as quickly as possible. We're looking at some tough decisions as we go forward, and we're going to want to make sure that the person we have is ready to take on some of the challenges and keep this district as remarkable as it is. And so on the 25th, when our next school board meeting is, we'll flush these things out in more detail. I'm wondering if the board is interested in forming a subcommittee to try to speed the process along. We also have other administrative positions to fill. Mark Hamery is retiring at Wildwood as the principal there, and we'll need to figure out the search process and all that. And maybe a successor would want to have input into that person as well. And there may be other retirements along the way, too, so.
I make the motion that we form a subcommittee to consider these ideas and others in terms of the process to bring a report forward at the January, January 25th, subcommittee or study session. So that group would have to come together pretty quickly here in the next couple of weeks and spend some time. I know there are 17 other open superintendent jobs right now in the state that we are competing with, and many of them are coming up on their closing dates, so it's going to be important that we get information up pretty quickly.
How many in Metro?
Three. ASIO, St. Anthony New Brighton, maybe only two. Just those two are Metro. So, and one, interestingly enough, Liz Thor Henderson is doing two searches. They're going to do an interim next year and then do a full search the next year because they felt they were out late in looking for a superintendent. And so I think there are many things we need to discuss as a board, and because of the timeline, I think it'd be most efficient, so I make the motion that we form a, the subcommittee.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All of us, all of you, say aye.
Aye.
If you'd like to answer.
I would. I will. I will.
I'll have to post all the meetings. Is anyone else interested? Can we have more people?
Can we all?
And if once we're passed forward, we've got it posted, is that correct?
Post it as well. Was it, I'm sorry, was it, is Kevin and Judy and Lucy and Julie? Oh, so, okay. Well, I'm interested too. I think we all need to.
Well, maybe we're back to work here, so we'll get it done.
Well, it's going to come down to everyone's schedule.
That's the point, yeah.
Right. So it's going to have to be daytime meetings to meet with Lynn and Nicole.
Oh, yeah, I'm all.
And get the information and.
I'm not, take, take me out.
In the next two weeks, who has daytime availability, won't we?
I'm all, take me out for that, yeah.
It'd be best to have the, maybe of, of whomever can attend? Or do we want to just have three to make it or four to make it, just a decision-making?
I guess, if it's, if it's a committee.
Lucy, Julie, and Kevin.
I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that.
Subcommittee, so it's just diving in and bringing a recommendation back. We made no decisions.
That's fine. Yeah, but you guys would be more, I heard the word nimble. Being able to get three schedules together rather than four, five, or six of us, we'd all the trouble there.
Right.
At what level of involvement is the board expected to take, to be? And I've never done this, and I don't want to be seeing the board overstep any boundaries or get unnecessarily involved. I don't know if we have a policy on that, I would have to look, but I want to be sure that we're not stepping on toes and that the administration, that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. Okay, so. So, you brought that up, I was actually going to talk about this, but this is one of the primary jobs of the school board. We hire the superintendent, and the superintendent takes superman across the organization. So I think it's very important that we, the board, the subcommittee of the board, are really in the, a little bit in the weeds on this one, so that we don't just do, you know, something, something, something. I think we want to all have a piece in this to. In other words, you say, well, let's go do X, Y, and Z with the ventures, which ultimately might be the thing, but I think we, the board, need to be a part of that. I think that's really, so, so, in other words, as the train leaves the station, we don't want to be left standing there. And I think that that, because that really is our job, is to hire the superintendent. But we need your, some of your contacts and expertise. We also, on the board, have some pretty deep tentacles out there with, with folks. And the MSBA thing, for me personally, is, and I know Lucy's probably, we've, I've got, I had some names already of people, but before we even get there, I think we, the important piece is to agree on the process. And, you know, the process, the timeline, and then we start implementing, you know, this is the implementation kind of stuff that after we agree on the process and how we're going to do it, whether, you know, we have a choice of, I think, White Bear, they had a firm, but then they ultimately just hired an inside person, Wayne. You know, so we could do that, or it could be the MSBA thing, which is kind of a middling idea. We could do one of the many search firms that are out there, you know, the, all of them have challenges. You know, we've seen Minneapolis, recent hiring of Minneapolis and the person before the current, at Graff before that, they used a firm and they went out, I think the, the number was like close to 50 grand, and they didn't do their, all the homework, and so then the person that was going to be it from Massachusetts wasn't it. So I mean, there's, there's a lot of different pieces in here, I just, I guess my point is we want to be a part of that.
The subcommittee will really help. And that's what we just mapped out some steps that typically districts go through when they are looking for, and trying to find a superintendent. So let's just simple steps we, we mapped out, and one of them could be, would be, you know, through this, we have to investigate.
I mean, the RFP would be the, you know, put out the proposal.
Yep, that's what we talked about.
Yep. So, but first, we have to kind of rally around what we think.
Sure.
Beyond that, then, if there are 17 other positions that, or however many other positions that, that you're looking at, that's not board-related then, or is it? Involvement, if there's like, no, 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 I'm talking for the district. If you have a replacement, you know, the principals and the people that are, the administration hires those people, the school board only hires the superintendent?
Ultimately, the superintendent would fit the principal, and we could have some input into that, we can, we could, you know, we don't often say we need people to, but he does.
Right, yeah, okay.
And so I think your point as well, thinking that to replace Mark would be maybe good to have, give some of the input, you know, but yeah, but ultimately, we kind of, the superintendent.
Okay.
Anything else, Ellen? So you guys would just get together and make the plan, Ellen?
No, it'll be posted. I think it needs to be a very public process, because it is a public thing, and so it's like, they had, Laura Posthoff's date.
It seems like it's true.
But the one post date is the last one. I think we need to, you guys.
That's a great question.
You know that one?
I want to thank Mark again for his service over the past nine years. It's been a wonderful experience working with Mark and it's been an important transition for us, for someone new, but I'm extremely excited for you and the opportunities you've had in front of you, and can understand why, after 35 years. It would be such a great time to make that change, and we greatly appreciate your time and dedication to our districts and the work you've done to represent us across the state through many organizations.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we do have a discussion about labor negotiations for a few minutes. We do have to close the meeting. If we need a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
See you, guys.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Mike, you can't stay, remember?
Right, so I was going to, madam, well, this, the second thing.